Uh, hey everybody, my name is Clayton Holland. I'm running for school board in two years. Special election seats.
And again, my name is Cooleya Pringle. I'm the Midwest Regional Organizer for National Parents Union. Also a Black Lives Activist and I've also been appointed to the St. Paul Recovery Activism. So, we'll just jump right in it and get started with our first questions. And if, um, I know we're live streaming, only have about seven questions. And then if anybody else wants to ask the candidates questions, we'll go some there. Or if, um, Trahern gets some on the side. So we'll start with, Clayton, do you support reparations for the American descendants of slavery?
Uh, I do.
Could you expand on that? Like, why do you, like, what do you mean? A lot of people say reparations. How do you think that looks for?
Sure.
Especially within the context of the school, the school system?
Um, well, yeah, I do, I do support reparations. I think, uh, it's, it's obvious that our country was built on slavery and, uh, the ramifications of slavery are still going on today. Uh, I, you know, if you go through neighborhoods and cities across, across our country, it's, there's a reason why the neighborhoods are the least services and the highest levels of poverty are black and brown backgrounds. So, yeah, I support reparations and I think, um, I'm not sure how that should look. Uh, I think that should, should be definitely a federal program. But I really appreciate that St. Paul, the people on the commission are leading that conversation now. So, yeah, I support, support it and I'm happy that it's going on as it's going.
Thank you, Clayton.
Yes, I just want to say that I also support reparations. I think, uh, this is, reparations is a great opportunity for, um, governancees here in St. Paul, including St. Paul's School Board, to really situate the sacrifices, the contributions, and above all, the struggles of black Americans here in the United States. It's really a chance for, not just for black Americans, but for everybody to, to understand how they are connected with that struggle, right? And how we often learn from it going forward. So, um, I, I think that it's a great way to figure out, um, to figure out, just, just to really just take apart that slave narrative story and, and really think about, um, the, the multiple different ways by which, uh, black Americans have contributed to the makeup of this country.
So, yes, I do support reparations. Um, it's already been federal. They said that we were supposed to give reparations and instead the slave owners got it. So, what we need to do is go ahead and put that in our school system by putting adult classes into our school and educating the parents for all the, um, non-education that we have gotten ourselves. And this caused a lot of trouble during the lockdown, but if we have to do the same in the lack of education, we received, like, the color of our school has been better mentioned in the genre through online, uh, which only has self-asking on their level of Google. So, being able to adopt by, um, in self-approving schools, uh, for, for, um, undo the brandy shopping, uh, to get community. Thank you, Jonathan.
The next question is, do you support police officers at the most, uh, public schools?
I think that they do have a special place on public schools. I graduated from Harvey Neitz School in 2000. We had two resource officers, um, we had two resource officers that were over two. Two of these, um, a book, uh, in a book outside of school in the community. They told me accountable and said, "Hey, I know who you are and I work at your school. So, I'm going to be accountable for your actions in the community." And, and I also maybe look at them when I see them, you know, if I'm going to the store, doing what I'm supposed to do, and I see a cop that I know, I'm striking up like it's my turn.
And that's the kind of relationship that we need with our children. Instead of pushing fear, 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 we need to repair them. And, um, if the police are willing to pick the right officers on the school, then I support that. But if they're going to keep on putting officers that are damaging for our children and that do not, uh, know how to work with children, then I say no. But if only the police can put the right people in the schools, then I support that. Along with a, um, giving our police position. So, that's all officers.
I'm looking at a little conversation about, uh, the, the, uh, and I appreciate, we're not getting any discussion about, uh, bringing them back to the school district. I don't think they have a place in St. Paul Public Schools. It seems like the work that they do is also being done by other staff and professions in, in our school district. And in addition to that, in terms of the security of our, uh, school district, we do have a security emergency management team that can also do a lot of the work that the SROs do. You know, there's no question that they build relationships with, uh, staff and students in their school buildings. And those, those are great relationships. But it, it's just a matter of, I suppose, I suppose the, the work that they do, to me, is just a bit redundant. And it, it could be filled in with, uh, other resources that the school has.
Thank you, Jen.
Um, yeah, no, I, I agree on the, on the St. Paul Public School, School Boards. I vote for SROs from schools. Um, I know there was some discussion of, there were some SROs that were, students loved them and all that kind of stuff, which, um, which is, which is fine, but I think that, uh, they didn't love them because they're police officers, they love them because they're, they're good people. And I think there's lots of people, um, I, I think that role of, you know, a security guard or whatever is important within a school, but I think that position should be, uh, held by people from our community, from that school community neighborhood that are, that are around the community, that are in the streets, that are in parks, parks and wrecks, whatever, that have, that already have a level of, that have a relationship with our kids. Uh, so, yeah, I, I'm, I'm happy for these police officers who are all in St. Paul Public Schools.
All right, so we'll start back with you, Clayton. What plans do you have in place? Or do you have a plan in place to close the education gap in St. Paul Public Schools that exists between non-white students and white students?
Uh, yeah, for sure. So, I, I believe, uh, I believe strongly in the idea, it's kind of like a three-pronged idea. We need, we need early education, we need increased funding, and we need integration. Um, so in terms of early education, I think that St. Paul Public Schools, uh, has, has an excellent early education program for any parents that have their kids in pre-K. Um, I think it's a great program and it's, and it may be expanded to three-year-olds, which I would agree with. Um, but the, but the next, the next link is where we're having real issues and we have that investment that we put into kids, four-year-olds. Immediately, you know, when they're, when they turn five and six, they're in kindergarten, first grade, our investment drops significantly. Especially in our highest poverty schools. Um, and what we see is that in our highest poverty schools, our enrollments declining and the school district's response to that is, wow, what we need to do to help to close the gap is close those neighborhood schools that are predominantly black and brown and high poverty. And we need to relook at how money's invested within our schools, school system. Yeah, we need incremental funding from state federal government. But the way our, our, our funding program is set up currently at St. Paul Public Schools is leftover from the 1970s. And the way money is being allocated is not equitable. Um, and so that has to be addressed. Then the third part is integration. I believe strongly in integration. For me, as a, as a white parent, it's, it's one of the greatest things that our school district can offer. Where we have 125 home languages spoken in our district. That's the second most diverse district behind New York City. And my kids, my girls, at age five, six, seven, I, I see them as having a cultural competency that is, is better than mine. And they're citizens of the world thanks to the kids that live, that, that are in their classroom. And I think too often, what we're doing is we're content with having schools with concentrated poverty and then schools with affluence. And I don't think that's the way we should do it. We need all our kids in our community going to school together. We need rich and poor and people from different parts and different neighborhoods, um, so that we can learn from each other. So that, that's, those are my three things to try and close the gap.
Thank you, Clayton, Jen.
So, I'm 41 years old now, I have four kids in the school district. And I've seen my share of young youth grow up and go out of St. Paul Public Schools. And what I've, what I've seen over time that is effective for, for, for folks who come from my community are, the people who are affected tend to have a lot of support around them, right? And I, I sort of identify them in three tiers. One, they have a stable family unit. It doesn't have to be a mom or dad, it could be extended family, but they have support in that fashion. But two, they have support from their schools. You know, for, for whatever reason, um, they, they grab, they gravitate to subjects at school, they do well, and they get supported by their teachers. And the third element is they're, they're in extracurricular activities, right? They're in either some, some form of art, music, or athletics, or something else on the calendar. And I think what helps these students over time is that you, they get these different perspectives to, to really, uh, see how, how, how they're making choices, right? To get some, uh, to get some, um, some input on how they're making choices over time, right? And I think over time, um, with the combination of these, these sort of three factors, they, they continue, over time, they continue to make the best choices for themselves. So, in the end, I, I think that not all the answers are at St. Paul Public Schools. If we're relying on St. Paul Public Schools, open up seven and one, close at four, to, um, to provide all the answers for our students, they're going to be successful, I have the best diversity to grow. I think they should be more clear. The St. Paul Public Schools should be invested in work, community should be invested in, uh, if we can't, do our own athletics and our art, can we be a partner with community that's on a dance and a big work out there? You know, I, I, I think over time, actually, we'll, we'll get some perspective about the choices that we make. They're going to fail, but they'll also have success over time. But they can't do that unless they have some, um, some people with experience and all of them helping them look like the choices that they make.
So I'd say the first thing is, is the busing and the zoning. The way that they have it set up now is intentional that our kids are separated by wealth. Um, you know, when you have a neighborhood school, that means that those kids in that neighborhood go to that school. Well, if you have, that neighborhood is in poverty and all those kids are going to that school, then that school don't get funding like Highland Park because that's where all the rich kids go. So why can't my child on the east side go to Highland Park and be bused over there? Why do I have to be responsible to get her over there? So, we need to open up the busing and go back to how they had it in the 90s and stop playing with our students and our families and just get back, get down to business. And, um, it's all up to the leadership. Uh, the St. Paul School Board was brought in and made for parents to have a voice. And somehow we don't, we didn't lose our voice, they took our voice. So we need to get the school board back into our possession and speak up and get our buses and our students to the schools that we want them to go to, not the schools that they tell us to go to based on the area code that we live in.
Thank you, Jennifer. The next question is, race, critical race theory has been a controversy in the national sphere. How do you all feel about, or how would you deal with a curriculum that is, um, centered around the people's history, um, and that is culturally responsive to the kids in the classroom? As well as having teachers who are culturally competent to teach culturally responsive in a multicultural community?
Uh, um, critical race theory, I don't like the name of it because it's put out there for, um, to cause problems and to cause tension. It's actual history. So, once we teach actual history, people will understand what critical race theory is. Um, there should never be a debate when we live in a country, um, what, what do we teach our children? We know what America was built on, we know what happened. Our children should know. It should never have to come from parents telling our kids behind closed doors and us never getting any backing to that being the truth. So, uh, we need a brand new country. Uh, we need the National Parent Involvement Day to be celebrated. It should be on the school, on the school district level that is celebrated and embraced in every school. There are schools that celebrate Asian history on National American Parent Involvement Day when it's centered, it, it's made by the NAACP. So why are we celebrating anything other than any, any race or ethnicity that helped black Americans? The adults people is the focus of that day. Um, when it comes to February, our kids ain't learning about black history the way that they should. So all that stuff needs to be in the, the, you know, everybody should take into account of what's really going in, going on in the district. Um, everything is being whitewashed, is being watered down. Um, when we talk about the achievement gap, we should not be chasing white students. We should be chasing Asian students because they're above white students. So, once people realize that, then we're going to move forward. And we're going to have real history, real teaching, real curriculum, everything in our school. So we just need a restructure of our system.
Thank you, Jennifer, Jen.
So, I think critical race theory has been around for the last thirty years, but we're just not talking about it. But that confuses me, but aside from that, I think, um, I want to say Kimmy Pritchard said it best that critical, critical racist theory is the theory that race is ever-present. It's present in the choices and the ideas that we make and have, it's present in institutions that we live in, right? So, I think in a sense, in a sense, that could be dangerous to people who think that we are beyond races. We are beyond this, we're not in racism, and we don't have to think like that, that, you know, we're just a bit of a past. But I tend to go with Kimmy Pritchard, that, that race is still with us, it's a part of us. You know, it's here before we're born, it'll be here after, you know? Unless we confront it, that's the way it's always been, so. That's what it is, is why I support critical race theory, is it forces us to have these conversations, really examine more critically, more deeply about just our daily choices and our life. But, but it doesn't stop there, that institutions that we participate in, right? And how we, and in the ways that we actually contribute to it, or, 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 um, contribute to racism, or, or, uh, stop it, or help it happen, continue to happen. So, I think in that way, it's, it's essential, right? But just, just to, just to share a little story of, of my own about, about critical race theory, how I can't seem to know it. First of all, it's not being taught at St. Paul Public Schools, so you don't have to worry about that. But we're just launching our ethnic studies program, which is now the same thing as critical race theory, right? I think critical race theory is something that you learn when you go onto college and into graduate school. Uh, those teachers are more equipped to teach you about that. But there is an online process around the, the ethnic studies that sort of build you up to be able to, to be able to sort of, uh, learn critical race theory. But my experience in the University of Mississippi State was that I took my first critical race theory class, right? And my professor was black. He was a black African-American man. And in his syllabus, there was nothing but black scholars, black literature. And I thought to myself, this is supposed to be ethnic studies. Why, why isn't there, uh, why, why aren't we hearing about, uh, Native Americans? Why aren't we hearing about, uh, Hispanic Americans? Why aren't we hearing about Asian Americans? So, the black perspective isn't the only perspective, right? And about eight weeks through the class, I went up to him and I said that, um, I can, I can, I can read these, this subject matter, I can read this literature, and I can be successful. But I had, I, I have to say, I, I don't like that this is the only perspective that you're giving in the classroom, right? And I want to say that I advocated, but it probably sounded like complaining. I complained that, why, why aren't we, why aren't we including the other folks that contribute to the makeup of, of our society? Contribute to the makeup of our country? You know, and he said, "We're good there, we're good there." And then he, and then he, he, he went as far as even recommending to me some meetings, right? About this subject matter that I was, that I was concerned about. And I kind of said, "No, I want it to be in this class." You know, and then he looked at me and he said, "Well, that's a privilege to think like that." You know, so, later on that day, I, I thought to myself that, you know, my, my resistance to learning this, this poetry, to reading about the stories of these people, really is me confronting with my own anti-blackness, right? It's like the fact that, um, maybe I didn't want to learn about this, right? But I learned a little about something else I had to choose, I can, but, you know, race isn't a choice. We don't give a chance, race. You know, it's here with us, and unless we think something about it. First thing we have to talk about, we need to do that, because nothing happens, right? So, go back to critical race theory. I think it could only help, it can only help to advance the conversation, make it deeper, make it more meaningful so we can move away from the surface level, uh, dialogues about and think about, uh, impacts of choices and making institutions that we're in.
Thank you, Jen, Clayton.
Could you, could you say the question again?
So, critical race theory has been in the national conversation. How do you feel about St. Paul Public Schools having a multicultural curriculum? Having it, um, being culturally responsive to the students that are within the school, so it's not random? And having teachers who are culturally competent to critically, uh, teach?
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, I got you. Um, so, yeah, a couple of things. It's, uh, you know, so I was first introduced to, um, critical race theory. So, I, so I studied, I was in college, I was an African-American history major. And so I was introduced to it in a senior level social theory class. So, kind of what Jen says, it's, it's like, uh, critical race theory is kind of, it, it's a college-level thing. And if some of our, some of our high school students are getting to a point where they're in a class where they're discussing that, great. But I think the, kind of the right-wing hubbub about it is that we're talking about our community, our country, that is, has been built on racism and it still persists. And I think just, you know, and like where we're sitting right now in this community, it's like, you know, I'm old enough to remember when these, you know, a couple of blocks from here, these houses that are now selling for three quarters of a million dollars, they were boarded up and they were drug houses. And they were that because we bulldozed, we, we bulldozed the freeway. Black neighbors were forced north and south of the freeway and the white, white neighbors fled, you know? And it's like, that's not in the past. That's, that, the effects of that are still happening to our community today, you know? And so, when our kids are living in this community, it's very important for them to understand. I'm a believer in history, you know, in teaching history. It's very important for our kids to understand that. And it's even more important for our teachers to understand that. And then in terms of culturally, culturally responsive curriculum, um, I'm a thousand percent in support of that. I think the big challenge is that the diversity of our district, we have kids from, you know, we have Mung kids, Karin kids, Romo kids, Somali kids, kids from Latin, you know, kids from all over. And how do we create a curriculum that each one of those kids feels their story is, is a part of it? And so, that's, that's the challenge of public schools, where we take everybody. And that's also the difficulty. How, how do we, how do we make it so that we could connect with every one of our communities and tell their story? And that's why I don't have an answer for that. And that's something that we will take, continue to work. We're going to keep needing to do better and change it, and do better and change it, and listen to the community, so.
Thank you, Clayton. Next question for you is, do you support a, um, grow your own program? We know that Minnesota is ninety-six, so ninety-five percent mostly white, whether you teach in the education system. Um, St. Paul is no exception to that, uh, teacher, um, diversity does not reflect the students that are in the school. Do you support a grow your own program that would create a more diverse teaching pool? Or a high school pathway to education, or some sort of program that would diversify St. Paul Public Schools' teaching?
Uh, yes, a thousand percent. And I think there, there's things, so there's a few things. Um, one, I, I think there's a possibility, and there's, there's discussions, the teachers union could be in favor of it, of like, kids from our high schools, that black and brown kids that come out of our high schools, get a degree and become teaching, become teachers, have increased seniority over, over teachers that aren't coming from our school district. And, and I think there's ways not only to grow your own, but, but to, but to place increased importance on getting people in our community to become teachers. So, yes, I support that a thousand percent. But I also think that's not enough. We, we simply don't have enough black and brown kids in our universities and to try and get, and I think it's an urgent need. Um, and I'm an advocate for, I mean, there, there's, you know, there's, uh, Coastal Florida University and Central Florida University, there are teaching universities in Florida, that are graduating as many black and brown kids with education degrees as almost the entire state of Minnesota. And it's really difficult for those, for those kid, I call them kids, twenty-two-year-olds, to come up to Minnesota and get the Minnesota licensure. St. Paul Public Schools needs to create, and we have a suitable program in place, we need to create a pathway to go on to these states that are already producing college graduate, edu, black and brown education graduates, and get them into the schools. So, yes, I support growing one, but it's not enough.
Thank you, Jen. And you probably, I'm going to pile up a few because you are a current board member. Um, the state has allowed for the tier program. Um, do you, uh, think that St. Paul Public Schools should be using the tier or the tier-two part to get more black and brown students who didn't go to a traditional teacher prep program but do have the means and, um, relevant content and have been in the community doing that job? As a way to become more diversified?
Yeah, I think, there's no way, I don't, uh, we have to be more thoughtful about this. Um, can't just be equal, thank you, just follow your heart. And, I think like Clayton said, Clayton makes a good point there. And it really starts with, it really starts with our own students in our own district, you know? And let them know that, um, this is what they can do, this is what, this is a job that's essential. It's an opportunity that's there, and we need to provide a pathway to make it happen. Um, it's going to be a long-term, long-term road to see that, to see that supplantation, right? And we need strong, consistent leadership in our district to make it happen. Um, but I would definitely be supportive of that, no problem.
Thank you, Jennifer.
So, yeah, I'm actually supportive of that. Um, actually, one of my ideas for if they have four new complexes in ten years, is to want to go being a straight-toe, pre-K as well, which will have a teaching, um, class in them. You know, being a, a black teacher grown up in St. Paul Public Schools. I can't see myself becoming a teacher because I've never seen a teacher that looks like this. So, I find all these, um, thank you, privileges to white people to be teachers. So, if we teach our kids from the very youngest of ages, that they can do whatever they want to do and be shown how to do it, then we're going to be the ones that are looking for it. Um, another way is a, um, pathway for parents. And teachers have a lot of positions that need to be filled, so why are we not filling up those positions for our parents? So, if we get our parents to become a, a teacher's assistant, then they could go on to become a teacher as well. Um, our schools need janitors, uh, childcare workers, and everything. So, it's, you know, when our schools make a relationship with their families and they know that their families are struggling, their family, why are they not telling them, "Hey, let's go work for St. Paul Public Schools"? You know, there's only, there's only so many people that actually trust parents if they can do that. So that needs to be across the board. Um, with the other three complexes, I want one, one to be a world-class complex, which would be very respectful. And that would teach about every ethnicity, everything, uh, race, religion, everything out there. Um, and then a pre-K complex, with ECCE in it, so that they can see, it needs transition from ECCE to pre-K and then on to Kinnon and so on, and not having to be around the bigger kids is, is, is fearful. Because four-year-olds are fearful of eight, nine, ten, eleven-year-olds. So if we give them the common space and they can, um, get the skills built to go into a bigger environment, then they'll be more successful at a younger age and get the, uh, get the confidence that they need earlier. So, I, I think, I think, yes, I agree with them.
Thank you, Jennifer. So, that was the last question. I'm going to have each one of you give a spoken remarks, what's your take on? Why should folks work for you?
Not a political point of view. Um, I speak for every student and educator. I want calm buildings, I want school safety, um, that comes with a life. I want teachers to feel good about going to I want teachers to feel good about going to work every day and be relaxed and not bullied by their principals in, at the district level. I want, uh, I want parents to feel invited into the school buildings. As a school board member, I would make the communication better. I would put a, a parent group under the school board where we can meet monthly with, with the parent group, and that would be from every school. They would have two people to represent their school, to go to this parent meeting, to speak out and advocate for what their, what their school needs. So we can meet every need. To say that the school board can't realistically do it, just let you know that it's not caring. Because the school district could do everything because the school district was made for parents. And once we get our voice back, the school, the school district will be better, the system will be better, because we're going to rebuild, we're going to restructure that system. We're going to put children first. We're not going to keep on giving out raises and saying we don't have, uh, funding for education, because all the, the raises that went out could have been funded for online school, could have been funded for COVID, could have been funded for schools, could have been HVAC system, change, everything. But instead it's fun, it's funding for the district. And that's not okay to use our kids as price tags. My child is a child, is, my child is a student. My child is not a price tag. It, it, getting, getting on the school board, i- i- getting into politics, getting into this, uh, district, all that stuff is not a money maker. People are doing it for the money instead of the care of the children, and we need to put children first and get it back in order.
Thanks, Jennifer Clayton.
Thanks, Jennifer, for that. So, you should vote for me because I have kids of my own in the district. I have four kids in the district. One is in, uh, high, high school, in ninth grade, one is in seventh grade, in middle school, one is in third grade, elementary, and I have a two-year-old, uh, early childhood education. And my two oldest sons, the one in middle school and high school, they were diagnosed with autism, uh, when they were, when they were little. And if you know anything about autism, then you know that it's a lifelong condition. They'll have it when they're five, they'll have it when they're forty-five. So my wife and I have committed ourselves to ensure that we, we partner with, with their, with their doctors, with their educators, with anybody who supports them, to ensure that when they get older, older as adults, they can support themselves. And that's how I approach, uh, my, my, my work as a school board. You know, I've always prided myself in, uh, building relationships, right? Bringing people together to get the job done. I don't think we can get it done in our silos, right? I don't, I don't think you can stick to your job, I stick to mine and hope that things can go right. I've had some tough conversations with my sons' IP teams, sometimes I was very disappointed in them, right? Sometimes I had to let them know if they failed. You know, and I'm not, I'm not afraid to have these conversations with administrators, with, with teachers, anybody who has a, a role of authority at our St. Paul Public Schools. So that's my background, you know? I'm a, I'm a parent volunteer, that's how I learned about the system, that's how I learned about our school district, and that's how I'll continue to approach this work.
Thanks, Jim Clayton.
Um, yeah, so thanks for having us, you guys. Um, yeah, so really, what got me involved and wanted to throw my hat in the ring for school board is I really, um, it's been the experience of my daughters going to the school, where, the elementary school. So we went to, sent our daughters to school across the street, Midway. Um, it's a high poverty school and what we found pretty quickly is that our friends and neighbors in other neighborhoods at other schools simply had way more opportunities for their kids to be presented to them. And so what, what I did is I started to learn, learn about the system. I sat on a district budget finance advisory committee. I sat on a committee for a year and a half, uh, where we looked at increased segregation and what we could do about that in the school district. Um, I was contacted by the families in Maxfield, like, hey, you guys started a PTO, how do we do that? How do we do that? So I helped the Maxfield community start their parent group, and it's now been three years, and they have a one-of-a-kind parent group, or they have community elders, they'll have the Promise Neighborhood, they have a whole bunch of people, it's, it's, it's one of the coolest parent groups in the entire district. Um, and I finally got to the point where it's not fair, you know, it's not fair that us parents, you, you shouldn't have to, you shouldn't have to fight to get for what your kids deserve, to get for what your community deserves. Um, and that's really what I'm going at school board with hopes to do, where, yes, we want you to be involved, we want families to be involved in their kids' education, we want families to be at the schools, but that shouldn't be, that shouldn't be mandatory for your kids to receive an excellent education. And that's how we felt as our family. But we had to be there, we had to push, we had to advocate, we had to do all these things. And my goal is to be on the school board, to ensure that our district provides equitable opportunities and has high expectations for all our kids. And I don't think they're doing that now, so, thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to just update you on that Maxfield-St. Paul Promise Neighborhood collaboration. St. Paul Promise Neighborhood deserved it for parents, so, just so you know. Um, and I've got them now on the national policy, and we're working something out, so. Um, is there, do you have questions online? Or does anybody else have questions?
Um, I just got a real quick question that you guys can, uh, answer real fast. Um, in regards to, um, the position, the positions and the programs and the development of all the athletic programs that the St. Paul, uh, schools entails, um, we do see a influx of the dominant society structuring the programs, establishing the programs, funding those athletic programs, and also, um, directing the values of those programs, being di, uh, athletic directors. So the question would be, what resource can you guys think of right now, just one resource, that can enhance the black population in regards to getting involved and being more athletic directors, more coaches, more program directors within, uh, St. Paul Public Schools' athletic, uh, uh, sculpture?
Um, yeah, so, uh, so I'm not, I, I'm not, you know, I'm a St. Paul Public School graduate, I played hockey and football, and so I, I played sports. Um, and to be honest, I, in my experience, I have lots of, uh, that, that was, I had more black coaches than I had black teachers, that's for sure. Um, and so I'm honestly not aware that that's, that's a problem, that there's, there's not black leadership at, at, uh, at, at the individual schools, so thanks for bringing that up. Um, so, so I'll, I'll just say that there, there's, you know, if, you know, my girls are athletic, they play soccer and hockey and lacrosse and, uh, across the city. And for anyone that has kids that play sports across the city, you for sure see, uh, an overrepresentation of black dads out there playing the role of coach and mentor and everything. So, uh, for me, that'd be a place to start. Uh, community sports or parks and rec centers, uh, there's lots of, especially black dads out there, uh, uh, helping the football team and helping whatever team, so that'd be a resource that I would look to.
Sure, but I think the number one resource is accessibility. Uh, parks and recs, as Clayton said, that's already existing in the community. How many times have we drove past a baseball field and it's just grown weed? Wheat, right? I think to myself, that's, that's a sport of the baby boomer generations, they don't play baseball anymore, right? And then I go to a field that, uh, plays games that aren't baseball, and I see that, that, that field just, it's just filled, filled with, um, filled with youth, filled with the balls, filled with coaches. So just partnership with, uh, local parks and recs, right? Making sure that those fields are accessible, making sure that there are programs there that the student can, student can just receive themselves participating in and belonging in that community, right?
Once again, I would say, uh, the school system itself. If you need a coach, let the parents know, we're looking for a coach. Have it advertised in the schools. Um, you know, when we go to the department stores, they have now hiring, so why not coach it in the school buildings, what we need? I mean, that, that's the best reference, I, I, I mean, resource I could think of. If you want somebody to coach the school, then have it be known at school. You know, it's not good enough to know online, because not everybody go online to check and see if they could be the coach. But, I mean, I coached football for LES, we won the city, so, I mean, it, it can happen. You know, if nobody told me, hey, it's a, it's a coaching job down there at LES, I would have never went and coached. So let it be known that there's coaching positions open. There's nothing wrong with putting a flyer up at the school.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question?
How do you think the city of, uh, St. Paul Public Schools should spend the COVID funding that has come, come in recent?
First, they need to establish a pandemic response team and put funding into that. Um, and then from there, they need to have money set aside for online learning, because we need online learning even without the pandemic, because there's too many kids being bullied and committing suicide, so they would be, you know, more punchway at home, so that should be an option every school year. Um, they need to switch up the air filtrations in the system. That's a good way to spend the money. Um, go out there and recruit the teachers that you're looking for and stop recruiting the teachers that are easy for you to get. You know, just take time and recruit, you know, don't just go for the fastest teacher. You know, we, we want our teachers to be, it's, we, we want our teachers to be well-rounded. You know, we, we want our teachers to engage with all children. So when we go out for the, whichever teacher's available, that fastest teacher, sometimes it's wrong and doesn't mix with that school building. So if they take time and, and do that, then they'll be fine. But the funding needs to go mainly for HVAC, online, and a pandemic response team. That, that's the three things that we need right now.
Thanks, Jennifer.
So with the, uh, rescue plan funds, most of that money's already committed to, to schools, right? Most of that money's committed to going to schools to directly impact the students in those schools, the teachers who teach in those schools, the staff who works in those schools. But what I don't see enough investment in is, um, and I said this before, you know, school has a start and close time, right? But when you look at it from a student's perspective, they don't stop learning after four. They, they need to be in a place where their, their learning is continued and supplemented so they can, uh, go, go home and go back to school or ready to learn again. So after-school programs, the community partnerships, that's one thing that I'm looking, uh, really looking towards, to see, uh, in really helping our district, guiding our district to, to, to develop a more robust partnership with existing programs. First of all, with existing programs that, um, currently, currently are prone to be affected, right? And in terms of, uh, another, another thing that I don't see enough investment in is, um, career and college readiness, you know, especially for our high school students right now. Can we really say that with the disruption that COVID has caused us, that they are prepared to go to college if they think they so choose? Are they willing to go to a, a trade, if they, if they so choose? I think we need to be more intentional about giving them the tools that they need to really be prepared. I don't think, I think we're underestimating, um, how COVID has impacted their ability to do so, so, uh, off the top of my head, I know that we have 1.5 million visitors a day, and I don't think that's enough.
Thanks, Jim Clayton.
Uh, yeah, a few things. So, you know, as, as Jim said, it's like, for this year, that, that money is, is spent. Um, the one thing that, uh, I do agree with is there, um, you know, they have these win teachers that, you know, uh, where you are now, whatever, but, but it's an investment in the learning loss and, and, and an investment in our literacy. And so I, I think that, you know, a benchmark of our third graders, uh, being at grade level, I think that's, that's very important. So that's one thing that I do agree with the district, that I think that's money, money well invested. Um, but for me, there's two other things. I want, for elementary-age kids, it's, it's again, it's an equity across the district. We have some schools where there's art, music, field trips, band, choir, all these sorts of opportunities. And on top of that, there's, there's quality before and after-school options. And so we need to look at what, what are the, what's the, what's the quote-unquote best school that we have in our district in terms of enrichment and providing a well-rounded education and providing those before and after-school programs that are quality and provide our families, our working-class families with an ability to, to go to work and come home and pick up a kid, they don't have to scramble and get, get auntie to pick up a kid and all that kind of stuff. Um, so I think that's key. We need to have, we need to, there's no reason why our school district is not providing a seven to six o'clock option for every single elementary school kid. There's no reason. That's what we do, that's what we're supposed to do, is provide for our, our community kids. So, so that's one thing. But also, you know, in my normal day job, I work construction and for, for a decade, people in my industry, in our city, we cannot find anybody to hire. And it's not like we're paying six bucks an hour, these jobs are twenty-plus dollars an hour, you know? And we need, we need a robust option for kids to say, hey, you're not going to go to college, you don't want to go to college when you're eighteen, maybe you want to go when you're twenty-two, or maybe you don't ever want to go, or maybe you don't know what you're going to do. But here, here, we have an opportunity for you when you're senior, you're going to learn how to be an electrician, a plumber, a carpenter, all these things. And then when you, the day you graduate, you can go and get a job for twenty-four dollars an hour with healthcare, with benefits, and there's going to be ten different companies trying to hire you. So I think, of course, college education is great. We want lots of kids to go to college, of course. But we also live in a city where three-quarters of our kids live in poverty. Three-quarters of the kids in this city, our capital city, live in poverty, and to me, that's unacceptable. And our school district is partly to blame, and we get three-quarters of a billion dollars every year to do something about it. And that is something that we can take, kids when they're eighteen, they get a job, if you're making that kind of money when you're eighteen, we can buy a house when you're twenty-two. We can help your family get out of poverty. You can start your own business and hire your brother or whatever, so those are the things I want to see invested in with these hundreds of millions of dollars, extra dollars we're getting from the federal government for the next three years, so.
Well, thank you, everybody, for coming out. If you guys could just quickly, um, say how folks can find you to learn more about you? Go ahead.
Sure, uh, my webpage or Facebook, so Clayton How, or, sorry, I should know this, ClaytonForSchoolBoard.com is the webpage.
Thanks, Clayton.
Mine is JimBooneForSPPS.org.
Thanks, Jim. Vote JenMcPherson.org or JenniferMcPherson.org. Thank you, uh, thank you all for being out here today. Um, hope folks got to know, know you all more so that they can make an informed decision come November, appreciate y'all stopping out, thank you.